May 13th, regular business meeting of the Foxfire Village Council. I'd like to let the record show that all council members are present with the exception of Councilman Warren Morgan and members of the audience. If you could, oh, we have an opening prayer. Get to me, Gilroy.
All right, we always thank you for the privilege to gather together and we thank you for that this afternoon. I ask you to give the council wisdom as we work through the agenda. And I just want to thank you that every good thing in our life has come from you and ask each one of us to appreciate all the good we have in our village and in each other in Jesus's name. Amen.
And then join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I ask for approval of the agenda, I have one change, which is to remove the April 24th work session and special meeting from the consent agenda. Those minutes are not completed yet.
I have an addition.
Any other, any other changes?
Yeah. I want to add a FPOA discussion under my agenda items.
Okay. Anyone else have any changes? That being the case, um, do I have a, a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion.
Oh, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Okay, and consent agenda approval? Have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Moving on. Comment period. Now, this comment period is for items that are not listed on the agenda. Anyone in the audience have any comments? None being. Move on to the zoning administrators' report.
This is a pretty short report for activities beginning April 9th through today. There are still 22 homes that are in the process or beginning stages of construction. No new home construction permit applications were received. There were two certificates of zoning compliance certificates issued for, excuse me, three. There were three, I'm sorry. 12 Richmond Roads, 67 Richmond, and 1075 Tus Vista and the ETJ. Other permits issued were two for a fence, one propane tank, and one accessory building. And that's it.
Now, the certificate of zoning compliance, that's different from a CO?
Yes.
Okay.
Before the CO was issued, they request that we...
Oh, so these are COs? So these are three homes that have been completed?
They've been completed, but the county issues the actual CO.
Right.
Yeah.
Any questions for Lisa? Anything else? No?
No.
Okay. Moving on to departments, we've got Finance, which has come to me, Gilroy.
Okay. In the First Bank account, we hold $392,907. In the money market account with First Bank, we're at $205,126. And then in the capital, the North Carolina Capital Management Trust Fund, in the general fund, we're running $3,254,542. And then the water fund, $886,0587. Okay, and then a little bit on, on budget update. Shannon and I now have started going through line by line, everything we did off of the work session. It's kind of tedious.
Say it, please.
It's really tedious. One number I'll give you is, we originally started with an estimated revenue for 2526 of $1,926,400. Based on the changes we made at the work session, where we took some off out of sales tax and we cut back a little bit, we're going to be working with $1,859,150.
Wow. We're working with what? I'm sorry.
Remember, we took $50,000 off of sales tax revenue.
Yep.
Just because, not just because, but it's just a very, very fickle number. If we get rolling and we see that there's more, that'll be good.
Now, does that include the water or is that separate from water? That's just general?
No, that's just general.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we only got through revenue and admin today. Look, an hour and a half, so we'll be back at it next Tuesday. Um, I also want to bring up, we need to change, I would like us to change, the date of the citizen partition, citizen participation for the budget to the 29th of May. The 22nd next week is the Thursday before the long weekend, and most people are checked out. And we have too many things that we need to get locked in. So I'd like to move it to the 29th.
What's the long weekend?
Memorial Day.
Memorial Day.
But it's kind of early this year.
It's very early.
Oh, oh.
So...
Why is my calendar not telling me?
We want to, we want to move the, hold on.
So from the 22nd at 6:00?
To the 29th.
To the 29th, same time?
Yep. And we, public hearing date stays the same, right, Lisa?
Yes, the 17th.
Okay.
Okay, so we're going for the 29th at 6:00.
Do we want to, do we want to make it at 6:00 or do we want to do 5:30 because...
Well, it depends upon what else is on the work session.
I know.
I mean, if we're talking about the pool and stuff like that.
Six is safe, I guess. I just have to hang around.
Six is safer.
Just trying to be efficient.
And then, I think, as a council, we would be wise to do another work session on the budget. We're still waiting on salary information, I think, right?
Well, salary, yeah, informa, I don't, I think we are, and we have to make a decision on that regardless of whatever information.
Yeah, exactly. That's, that's a big one. We'll start working on the fire contract soon. We're going to lock in a date to meet with Eric. And then we still have, we got the new general ledger accounts to go in and all that kind of stuff. And so the one thing we want to be sure we do is when that budget gets posted, that it's tight. And yeah, I realize that we can make changes at the public hearing, but the fewer changes we have to make at the public hearing, the better, because it just complicates things. So, I don't know when we want to do another work session.
Well, I would...
Next Tuesday, 4:30? Uh, planning and zoning is Tuesday at 5:30, right?
Next Tuesday is not good for me.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, sorry. The 22nd at 4:30?
Do we always have to be that late?
We could do, um...
Do we do 2:30 on the 22nd?
2:30 is better for me, because I don't know how long, I mean...
Probably better for everybody.
If we could, because it could be a couple hours if we really want to focus on everything.
Yeah.
So...
Or Friday.
No. 2:30?
2:30 on the 22nd.
22nd?
On the, actually, the 29th is when that informational meeting, that Brady wants to come and do that for council, and that's at 6:00 PM on the 29th.
Can we move that? Have you advertised that yet?
No, but I, it depends on his schedule.
Well, people don't have to register to run till what, in July, right?
July, but, yeah.
Can we move that a week or so?
Yeah, we would have to check with Bob, right?
Yeah.
Did they have, did they give us any dates in June?
No. They did not. I'll call him on Thursday, actually. I'll call him on that weekend.
Can I say something else about that?
Yeah.
We need to, I think, and we told, have we put anything on the website that says, hey, if you're thinking about running for council, this is when you have to register by and all that kind of stuff?
Not yet, because I don't have that information firm from board elections, because the day that normally, the first Friday is on July 4th. So they've not decided whether they're going to do the 3rd or the following Monday. So that's not even going to put on their website yet. And I'm waiting, Brady's supposed to give me some information so I can get kind of a, an idea of what this is going to be.
Then I would say we shouldn't do the informational meeting until like the beginning or the mid part of June, if we don't have the information up there for people. I don't know.
Well, if it's July, if the registration date is July, I think sometime in June might be better.
All right, I will give them a call on Thursday and see.
See if they can do something.
Yeah.
We said budget work session, Thursday the 22nd at 2:30, right?
Uh, yes.
2:30.
2:30.
May.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. I think I've done, okay, I think that's all I got. Oh, we need to add one other line item. We talked about FPOA, we've got to get a line item in for whatever support we're going to give for their events. And I don't know if that goes under admin or where it's going to go, but it's got to go somewhere.
I would say admin. Oh, well, we, well, we could do it under parks, like Parks and Rec.
Parks.
You know?
Oh, something else we need to do next week.
Well, no, we just need to find a place to park the money.
Yeah.
And we can talk about that when we get a park, I just, I just was thinking about it.
I'm thinking of it as a recreational kind of thing.
Parks. Okay. Okay, I'm done now.
Any questions?
So we do need that number for the budget.
Pardon?
We'll need a number for the budget for this year, the fiscal.
Yeah.
We need all kinds of...
All right. Are you going to email out a new one of these revenue sheets?
We're done, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And she'll print it before.
I can, if you guys want just the revenue sheets, I can, I can do it.
No.
But, but as long as we have the big number, I think maybe we'll just do the whole thing.
Well, and, well, the thing is, is that by looking at it, if there's like weird mistakes or something, we can...
Yes.
We can, um...
Well, I can do that.
Yeah, just, if you could just, um, email out an updated version of this.
Okay, but we, the whole thing's not updated though, and it's all in one big document.
Okay.
Let me see if I can just cut and paste the revenue part.
Well, we could just print the revenue part, that's all. Just...
We'll do that later.
Well, before, let me put it this way, before our meeting or when the rest of it is updated, send us a new copy.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Oh, yeah, absolutely, of course.
All right. That's it for me, Eric. Okay. Next is Streets and Park, Councilman Norman.
Yeah. Okay, so, pool construction update. It has been raining a lot, as we all know. They were supposed to do the coping on May 9th. Unfortunately, the night before, we had quite a bit of rain, so we could not do the coping at that point. That has been pushed back now because, again, we have gotten a lot of rain. As of today, I don't know what day we're going to be on their schedule to have the coping done. Um, I can almost guarantee you the pool's not going to be open by Memorial Weekend, because first, the coping has to be done, and that's a day project. The next process would be the plaster in the pool. That's a day project. Um, most of the plumbing and everything else in the pump house is done. We do need some electrical done in there. But after the plastering, then we have the deck, which is about a week. And we can't do the deck until the coping is done, because it has to line up completely even. And then, we have to get on the calendar for an inspection through the health department. And we're at their mercy for that. And you can't get on the calendar until everything is done.
Right.
So...
Can, do, can we, can we call to find out what the general lead times are running? Or do they just not do that?
No.
Okay.
They do not. And it's hard to say at this point. We are planning on opening it, but again, uh, this rain has really put us on a lot. So I'm going to segue into pool staffing. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
What? We need, we need staff. That, that pool will not open without staff. I'm just going to preface this whole thing by saying we will not have staff that are volunteers. Number one, I've spoken with the insurance company, and that ensures the village, and they said it is a liability to have volunteer staff. Number two, we basically have to have people who are hired to manage the pool. And my suggestion is, if we have people who are thinking they would like to volunteer, put in an application and become a paid employee at that point. But the pool will not open with volunteers. And, and another reason we can't go with volunteers, we have volunteers at our yardways, and I thank them very much for putting in the time, but as we all know, people who volunteer sometimes don't show up. We can, we cannot rely on volunteers at the pool, because if people don't show up, we have to close the pool. So this is another reason why we want paid employees at the pool. So if you know anybody, I, I did ask Lisa to reduce the age from 17, or 18, from pool attendants to 17. And we are bumping up the pay for the pool manager to $18 an hour, as opposed to the 17.
Okay, so I'll change the add I have on first class if I've just taken it down to 17. I haven't put anything in there about pay.
Okay.
All right. All right.
All right, so, yeah, if you know anybody, college kids, we'd love to have them apply.
What were they able to be responsible for?
I, I, good question, and I'll answer that now. Um, basically, and I'm going to have Lisa interject in case I miss anything, because Lisa managed the pool for 18 years?
About a year.
18 years. Lisa was in charge of all the hiring of staff. She did a great job of hiring the staff. She, we first started out with lifeguards, actually.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
And then we went to pool attendants. So Lisa always did a fantastic job with doing that, and Lisa is helping in doing it this year again for us. The only year she didn't do it is the year we had the management company. So, um, the duties, basically, opening the pool in the morning, taking the dolphin out, which is a pretty big piece of equipment. If you don't know what a dolphin is, it cleans the pool. Uh, once that's done, they get in, kind of clean the tile around the pool, because as we all know, not everybody takes a shower before they get in. That's okay, but tile gets kind of grubby, so that's got to be cleaned. They also align the furniture, get all that out. Um, they're also in charge of, uh, when people are entering the pool, uh, they're taking care of the bathrooms during the day, making sure they're clean. Um, help me out, Lisa, what else am I forgetting? They're also in charge of making sure...
Well, it's all, it is posted. It's posted on the website. So what I would suggest is that people go to the website, and it's also posted in the pilot, so...
Yeah, I mean, and it's basically watching people during the day, and they're not lifeguards, I just want to let you know that.
Enforcing the rules, that's...
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Right, they have to enforce the rules, um...
Check people in.
Check people in. They do have to, um, basically punch, punch cards.
Clean up after, when people leave.
Are they cash handling?
No. No, we're not doing that.
Credit card handling?
No, no.
No money on sight.
So, you know, once the pool, everyone is out, they clean up the pool, put the dolphin in. So there are duties involved.
How long is the shift?
We haven't really...
We haven't talked about that.
I'll ask kind of like...
How many people we have?
Yeah.
It could be, you know, all day.
Before, I used to have a whole 15-week schedule done, every single staff member. I would have an orientation, we'd go over everybody's shifts. They'd make their changes there. If they had vacations coming up, I'd make them switch. Right now, you signed here that you're going to do this, but it's first, everybody was, knew what they were doing. Right now, we're just kind of floundering until we can get some days.
Do you need to get with Sand Hills Community College?
I have.
You have, okay.
Lisa's already done that. And we have to have at least two people, because if you only have one person...
For shift.
Yeah, for shift.
I mean, if two people are all working together, we don't have anyone working alone.
For breaks and so, and yeah, you're right, we don't want people working alone.
So how many people do you think we need total?
Well, I think last year, they had, or 23, they had 20 people that they pulled from. Now, are we going to need 20 people? Probably not. The problem is that the end of the season is when, you know, kids start going back to school and stuff. But yeah, I mean, if we can get at least 15 people, that would be great.
So, okay, but anyway, it's posted.
And does that answer your question?
It did, thank you very much. I apologize for speaking out.
And I just lost Sally. Where'd she go?
Yours.
Oh, is she coming back? She hopes to. Do you want to take it or not? She didn't leave.
Um, can we...
Okay, I'm down with the pool unless there's any other questions.
Okay. Can we move on?
Yeah, you know, I can probably do the FPOA thing. Basically, what we had discussed, um, normally, the FPOA has the, wait, wait, is that Sally? Oh, there she is. Are you okay?
Sorry, my sister won't call, my brother called, my mom called, I went, what is going on?
Okay, hang on, I'm going to introduce you. So normally what happens, and Sally, um, we were, we've been talking, uh, the FPOA normally has a 4th of July picnic at the park. And I'm going to have Sally get up and discuss what we've kind of talked about doing in lieu of the 4th of July picnic at the park. So Sally, come with...
Look, can we, can we put this to, um, public comment at the end of the meeting? Because this is kind of outside of what we thought we were going to be doing for our meeting today. So can we? Can we, can you stay?
I have to leave at 5:25.
Okay.
It, it won't take that long.
It's not going to be a long conversation if you want to talk. She added it to the agenda.
Well, she added some kind of an update. We, I wasn't aware we were going to have a, you know, a guest speaker.
Well, no, I, I could do it, but I asked Sally to kind of just get up and do it. Go ahead.
So me and her were talking, I said, it's kind of hard for the FPOA. I'm Sally, I'm like, do I have to say one, three, four, and all that stuff? Anyway. It's hard to plan an event when the pool opening keeps moving, because you have no control of rain, you have no control of contractors. So when me and her were talking, I said, we're having hot dogs and hamburgers at the opening, which was supposed to be the first week of June, and then we were going to have hot dogs and hamburgers on the 4th of July, which is the first week, yeah, the beginning of July. I said, let's just merge them. Instead of having the 4th of Ju, instead of having the 4th of July at the park, we'll have the 4th of July in the grass, outside the pool, we'll bring the tents, the big tent that we had, we'll bring all the 12 by 12 tents, everybody brings chairs, tables, we'll have hot dogs and hamburgers. We couldn't get a vendor, but we're going to try to get ice cream or whatever. But on that day, the FPOA members will have a discount like normal, and then the pool, which is a whole separate entity, has nothing to do with the FPA, where the resident's getting free. So it's totally two separate things, but happening at the same time. You were part of 4th of July, she was part of, um, the pool opening, and you two two were meeting next week?
Yeah.
We're meeting next week at the coffee shop, if you want to come.
So that's what we're planning.
And we're going to discuss it, plan it, do, decide what the signs will look like, blah, 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 and the pool's strictly open. Maybe it's another month, yeah, six weeks. Rain and the construction and all of that.
What?
No, they would have to bring...
Well, we have spring grills, that's different. We'll bring gas grills and...
What I think we should do is, we should probably have a meeting, the three of us, as far as, you know, working with the FPOA, and then bring a plan to council that the council can then say yes or no or whatever. So why don't we do that? We'll meet next week and, uh, we'll get something together. Erica Campbell.
Wait, when was that? Is it, is it 7:00 o'clock in the morning?
9:00 AM.
9:00 AM?
What time?
21st.
Uh, what day?
21st.
21st.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Okay, let me talk to my brother. Thanks.
Okay. Okay, anything else?
No.
Moving on to public safety, Councilman Nelson.
Okay, the police update by Chief Michael. Good afternoon, how was everybody?
Good. Fine, how are you?
Real well.
Um, as I've turned over all the sheets, one of them I've had so far for the year, as well as last month. Um, our calls for service and activities last month came in at 1,359 events for the health. For the year, we're sitting just under 6,300, at 6,298. Um, again, staff's been trying to stay pretty, steady, proactive, and just knocking some things off the list. Uh, just a quick update of what we had last month, very brief. Myself and Derek, we completed some more investigative courses, just to try to get a, him up to date on a lot more of these other things. Caleb and James both completed their SFST, which is the field sobriety testing. So now they are completely DWI, unfortunate, they have everything, they need to process a drunk, if you will, complete. So, got that off the list. Our reserve officer, Bedore, he actually completed right at 50 hours that, the week that we were at all in the school. He worked for us all week. Or, excuse me, four days that week. But nonetheless, as I said, he completed at this 50 hours that is necessary. We had two B, or technically one B and E, but it was two vehicles that were broken into at our park back last month. Smashed windows, took some items, purses and a couple other things, debit card and credit cards, so, um, obviously, we're working with ourselves and some other agencies. Two, two people have been arrested and, for that case. So, um, again, hats off to all the guys that have been trying to work very diligently to try to get someone sort of situated.
And those, those were not local people? Is that true?
No, they were not. No, one, uh, both the people that were arrested were originally from Florida. However, they're part of a traveling gang, if you will. They're right through areas, they smashed windows, and they go to other places, and they use the cards or wherever it may be. Um, and that's what happened in this instance. They are actually caught down in Cornelius, right on the Charlotte.
Wow.
We went down there the next day, charged them with, you know, some other things, and so that's kind of where we are with it.
So do they not reside?
Nope, they're not, they're not North Carolina residents. They're actually, one of them resident currently of South Carolina, one of them's still resident in Florida, thankfully. But again, they, they travel all over the United States doing this sort of thing.
Well, what scares me is it's coming to our park.
That's exactly right.
Why did you pick our park?
It was either that it was a good place to hit, because they got several thousand dollars out of the mix and, yeah.
Yeah.
Who leaves that in their car?
No, it wasn't cash, it was debit cards. And so debit, credit cards, and they went to the bank, cashed a couple fraudulent checks, you know, were on the way out the door, wherever the, the cops there were called, using our You know, we're on the way out the door, wherever the, the cops there were called, using our, so, or our, they can buy these. So, but once that happened, they actually were able to catch them in the act of doing that. Once we went in and charged them the next day with a couple of things. So, um, but yes, so, like you were saying, that is a very disturbing thing. Like I said, they, folks travel, it's a, it's a kind of crime of opportunity at that point. And like I said, these cars are here worth a lot. It wasn't a, "Oh, let me do a section door handles," which again, we do encourage everybody to lock their doors, but honestly, they smashed a couple windows, grabbed a purse and another bag, and gone within probably an hour or two. So, but nonetheless, it's like I said, but we were able to make, uh, two suspect arrests. Outside of that, that's all we have.
You got any candidates for the additional auxiliary officers?
I've got one. I'm just waiting on the finalized paperwork and whatnot for them. And then, like I said, that's currently, I'm gonna keep it open for a little while just to see what we can find. And once we kind of find our best selection, if you will, we will move forward with the process on bringing them onboard as well. Outside of that, that's kind of where we're all.
Thank you.
Cause we have two, right? Already?
We have, we, we have one reserve position currently. We have two positions that we've moved to. We definitely don't have one open reserve position.
Okay.
Any questions?
Did you want to bring up anything with the, um, the possibility of that tier one grant that, that we may or may not be applying for?
Yeah, uh, so I actually just received an email from our grant writers a moment ago, but, um, something was presented to us by the, uh, the North Carolina Crime Commission that, uh, we can apply for a grant. And the basic things that they're looking for is NDTs, which is our car computers, um, radios, obviously we got that radio, or cameras slash surveillance footage. Um, I initially, of course, thought about our LPRs that we asked to possibly put in out here. Um, the way it reads, if I'm not mistaken, it is up to fifty thousand of funding, I think, I believe it is. And so that would actually cover us for the year for our installation and subscription fees and everything of the sort. And then we'd actually have, uh, cameras on our account that come in, catch what's coming in here. So I, like our B that happened over here, we would say, "Hey, on this date and time this happened," we could kind of start pinpointing what vehicles they were in at the time of occurrence. Um, as well as, we've had some other high-profile incidents around here, we would be able to backtrack a lot of that information as well. Um, but, like I said, I have spoken with our grant writer. Um, she's onboard for writing us the grants. Um, obviously with the incurred cost if the grant comes through. So, but nonetheless, is, I have spoken to her, and I believe we're going to move forward with trying to even get the grant. We may or may not get it, like all grants are eligible for, but with a shot in the dark.
What's her fee?
Uh, her fee is, uh, anywhere from five to ten percent, depending on the package. However, uh, based off of what I've gathered from her, is if we are not awarded the grant, we do not owe her anything.
Okay, do you have that in writing?
Yes, we do. I have an email, how about that? But yes, and so like I said, that's what we're working with currently, um. Like I said, she offers a, I guess, a minimal fee of five percent for various things. It's ten percent for a full package. So it's a turnkey package, as she calls it. She writes it, she submits it, she does everything. She does actually the, uh, I guess, the funding receipts and so on, so that she can turn it into people. So for ten percent of whatever it is we get.
Right, so there's no upfront money to issue?
No, no, she says she'll write, she'll write all the grants we want her to write, and it won't cost her anything, or it won't cost us anything.
This is the same woman that has done our police-
Three years past.
Yeah, grants in the past. And although the, the only thing with this is that the tier one community, I don't really have the definition for that, but we're not one. But perhaps, you know, because of some other things, funding maybe?
And, and she did, she did state that while in that way, we are not considered a tier one county. And again, we don't know the exact term for what a tier one county would be. I'm assuming it's financial obligation. Um, but nonetheless, is, she said, "Hey, you guys are not a tier one county, but what's it gonna hurt to write for?" It, it's shot, and it may stick. And if it doesn't, cool, here's extra money dollars for you guys to move forward with whatever project you wanna do. So, um, but yes, I did receive an email from hers, if you want to go. Any other questions? All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right. Mayor Chief Eric, appreciate it. Sorry, I haven't been here for a couple of them. Work drives me out of the area. Um, so during the prior month, we ran twenty-six calls out of Station Sixty-Five. It's thirty percent of our seventy-seven calls for the month. Uh, we hosted a couple of training classes that were open, uh, throughout the state. Uh, we did an instructor one class. We had seven of our personnel complete that. It's a forty-hour, five-day class. And then we did a fire officer one, where we had nine of our members, uh, from West End participate in that. So a lot of our full-time people, as well as our volunteers. Uh, other training that we've done in the, in the month, we did a, every quarter, we do a countywide training, um, that helps us with ISO, and it was, uh, based on what they call big water. It's utilization of waters, uh, static water supplies, such as ponds, rivers, stuff like that, as well as how to get the most bang for your buck out of a hydrant when you have a larger fire. Uh, so we participated in that. We also helped with a community outreach program with the Aberdeen, Carolina Railroad. We did the Easter Bunny, the Easter Trails, um, out of the West End Station over two days. They ran six train rides out of there for the little kids, which is always fun. Um, we've completed the hose testing for the year. I did send an email about hydrant testing. We are gonna do hydrant inspections and cleaning up around them. We're just not gonna flow any water this year. Uh, that's gonna be an important thing going forward though for ISO, because we do need to make sure we know what can get out of every hydrant. Uh, we'll just work with Jesse, Gary on our warranty, on, um, on that in the future. And the other thing I'll say is, if, once you get to the part where you need to fill the pool, if you need help with oaths, you know, we'll help you out with that, as I think there's a hydrant not too far from there. And then you got my email on the barricades and all that.
Yes, and we are gonna probably get, uh, one off of those, so, thank you.
Any questions? And I know Mary, we're, we're trying to figure out dates for the budget stuff.
And I just wanted to say, what is it, twenty-five years for you?
Uh, thirty-eight, or twenty-five at West End, but thirty-eight old.
Oh, okay, that was a nice article about seven nights, so.
Thank you.
So, congratulations.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have.
That's it?
That's it. Long may it last.
All right, on to the mayor's report.
Oh, no.
I know. Well, the informational meeting, um, obviously has, for election candidates, has been changed. So we will, um, set a date for that sometime in probably June for that. Um, and basically, um, what we are encouraging for that meeting is anyone who is considering running for a council position, uh, to attend this, to understand the rules and responsibilities and, um, time constraints, um, for someone who is running for council in a small town. That, that's the real important part. Um, one thing I wanted to, next thing I wanted to go through with the, um, water. We are in stage one, water conservation. Water restrictions, water conservation. And I just want to make a comment that if you look at the Moore County website, um, right at this time, they've got just for Moore County and their water system. They have, uh, rules and tips on water conservation, and then I encourage all residents to, to look at. Um, very simple things to be mindful of the water in our, in our area. Because not only do we run off of wells, but there are other towns that also run off of wells. And the county gets their water from various places. So that, and it's all, it's a precious commodity here. It's a precious commodity everywhere, but here specifically. Um, but if you look at their website, and if it is up to date correctly, it says, "All water systems are currently at stage one in Moore County." So I think what people need to understand is stage one is a voluntary conservation of water. So just use your water mindfully. We're not restricting water. But I think, um, what people have to realize is that, you know, established shrubs and plants don't need water, um, even in the hottest of summers. And lawns, um, most people, if there is, if it's an established lawn, um, if you watered once or twice a week, you'd be fine. I think people just get carried away with, you know, "Oh, I have to water every day." And we, we do, um, want to recommend that people really just be conscious of their water. Now, new, new lawns and new plantings are a different situation. Our new homes that have just been built, they do need extra water, and we should all just be understanding of that and kind of contribute to the fact that some homes will be using more water. And I also want to say that this is not an aquifer problem or constraint. We have plenty of water. It's not as though we don't have the water. What we have right now are people using water for irrigation, which is stressing our pump times. And the state demands that if your pump times go over certain hours of pumping per day, that you now have to implement conservation measures. So I just want people to understand that this is not, you know, random, nor is it unusual, especially in North Carolina, there are times when you have to conserve water. Um, and again, it's voluntary right now. And a lot of people, I've gotten some letters from people saying that, you know, um, you know, they're not sure if it's incompetence or this or that with our water system. Our water system is in good shape. We are trying to get this other well online. Work is progressing in, in getting it to a point where it can get hooked up into our water system. But we cannot do that until the state goes through their paperwork. And you can only rush the state so far before you get put at the end of the line. So, um, I think it's important for everyone to understand that we are doing the best we can. And, um, we're still thinking that with, probably by, within a few months, and I don't, I can't say that for sure, but our new well will be online. Once that well is online, we are going to be, um, searching other well sites right, right as soon as we finish that. So we do have options to, uh, improve our water availability, getting the water out of the ground. Um, and then a lot of people, some people, there has been two, two emails that I received that had mentioned building moratoriums. And I just want to let people know that it's not as though you can just declare a moratorium and, and say, "Okay, no one's gonna build." Um, that opens a can of worms for lawsuits, number one. It also, you have to have a very good reason for a moratorium. And right now, the very good reason, the only reason we have is that irrigation demand. And irrigation demand is not really, um, a serious concern when it comes to moratoriums. Uh, you have to really, you have to really, um, come up with health and safety issues or, um, other reasons to go into a moratorium. And it, they're usually not more than sixty or ninety days, and that really doesn't buy you much. Um, so I think, I really would like to ask people, and I know our residents, most of our residents have been extremely cooperative with all of our conservation requests. And I want to thank everyone for doing that. Um, so I think, let's just keep going the way we're going. I think people are conserving. It has been raining, so, um, let's just, I would like to ask people to just have patience with the conservation measures. They seem to wanna, I mean, people conserve on everything, so power, water, let's just see if we can make it through. Um, any questions for me on moratorium, or any comments you guys want to make on that, for the water system? We are investing heavily in our water system too. I want to make sure people understand that, as far as, um, the infrastructure, the wellhouses, um, and again, getting more wells in, in the ground. More than that's been done in years, so. Progress is, is advancing. And the last thing on here was HB seven sixty-five, which could have been a significant discussion that we had this evening regarding this House bill regarding, um, zoning and building regulations, which looked like it was written by the building lobbyists.
Oh, it was. I could, I could read you the amount that the Builders Association, the Realtor Association donated to four primary sponsors.
Yes.
Absolutely ridiculous.
Those two associations contribute to everyone. They're the, one of the largest that, those lobbyists or those associations are probably the second largest out of the party contributions to political campaigns. So anyway, this bill, um, did not make it into crossover.
Absolutely.
And it's in the Rules Committee, I believe, right now. Um, and I'm, I'm not sure legislatively what that means, but unless it gets, parts of it get added to other bills, which we have to be mindful of, um, it's dead for now. Or it's, hasn't made it to crossover. So we're-
Well, if it doesn't make crossover, it is dead.
Well, unless they add it, unless they add language in, in other bills. So that's a good thing so far. Um, I don't have anything else. Does anyone have anything? No? Okay. We have no new business. Um, old business, um, we did have a meeting with the Foxfire Boulevard, uh, property owners. That meeting, um, highlighted a few historical, not very clear situations that we had in the town. Um, and I do have a draft letter, basically recapping the meeting, and saying that we will not be making any changes in the rules at this time, um, for Foxfire Boulevard. And that, um, we're gonna, uh, basically, we're not gonna make any changes. And that we're, we are exploring options to improve the traffic flow and promote a safe and attractive boulevard for all the residents of Foxfire. And when we figure out what we're going to do there, we will make sure everyone's aware of it. Um, I just wanted to thank all the property owners too, that contributed to our discussions. And, uh, have to admit that, uh, deed, deed language back in the seventies was, um,
Oops.
It was amazing what, what people were putting in deeds. And it's, and this is not an isolated case. I mean, anyway. So I'd like to, um, I guess make a motion that the council approve that this letter go out.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None being? Lisa, if you could get those, doesn't have to go certified, but just get those mailed out to the property owners. Okay. All right, now moving on to public comment.
Items.
And this is for items that were discussed or that are on the agenda or discussed in the meeting. Are there any public comments? Please state your name and address.
Kelly Stunkert, whose son's a client. Um, the moratorium that you just spoke about, that seems to come up regularly on Facebook, and I have not seen a response. I mean, you, you just gave a response. Is there something on the website that we can point people to, or can we put in what you just said? Kind of put that to rest for the time being, because that tends to get people all fired up.
Yeah, well, number one, we don't participate in Facebook, especially as council members. We, we don't act alone with anything. Um, I, I would, let me, let, let me work with Lisa and see if there's something that, that could be stated, um, on that.
Yeah, I mean, we could, anybody here could put into Facebook, see the website for this information.
Yeah. That's a good point. Thank you very much. Any other public comment? None being, could I have a motion to adjourn today's meeting?
I make motion.
All secondary.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None being?
By eight.
Meeting adjourned five eight easy.